That's right, and you're like...
I was just trying to help, but I was on a conference call.
You will?
I can't get in the car or get it.
They're cutting this knee off.
They are?
Yep.
You're gonna walk with the lead.
I was trying to do what I could without...
Did that catch your breath?
Well, I got, once I got him on the mil road, I figured that was alright.
It is 6:05, like to call the order, call to order, the Daniel Town Council meeting from Monday, November 6th, 2017. Tonight we have a public hearing amongst other issues for the town, so if anyone get a chance to see the agenda, and if not, I believe there's one on the table. We'll start out with any public comment concerning any issue not on the agenda, and like to open that up if there was someone that would like to bring anything up. Pam, we're on the public comment concerning not any issue on the agenda, if you had any issue not on the agenda yet?
Not yet.
I'll be closing out by the time you sit down, I just thought I'd ask.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, doesn't seem like there's any comments, we'll move on to item number two, which has a presentation by Adam Chandio.
Yes.
And the Heber Valley Hospital regarding hospital expansion. I think we got kind of an update a year ago, and disappointed to be a continuation of that, and so I believe you're going around to all the communities and then just updating everybody.
That's correct.
Turn the time over to you.
Thank you very much.
Once again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
You bet. How much time do you have today? I don't wanna take too much.
Just enough, but not too much.
Perfect. Well, thank you, my name is Adam Chandio, I'm the hospital administrator at Heber Valley Hospital.
Before dawn came.
Taking up to you, I appreciate that very much. I've been in my role now for just under eight weeks, so a relative newcomer, so fresh meat for you here on the front of the council. I've actually lived here in Heber Valley for about 40 years, and been working for amount of healthcare for that same period of time, at Park City Hospital and here at Heber Valley Hospital. So really excited to be able to be here, to work in the community that I live in and help serve our community. I wanted to just talk about a couple of things, if I could. We mentioned the hospital expansion that we have ongoing, so I'll touch on a few highlights there, but just to also give you just a brief overview of some of the things we have going on at our facility. It's an exciting time for us, just as it is for your community, you all are experiencing a great deal of growth right now, and managing through that, we have a, we are working really hard to keep up with that growth as well, and be able to provide for the needs of our community. So, as those of you who drive by our campus know that we're in the middle of phase one of our expansion project. Total, we have, it's a two-phase project, the total's in the range of $35 million in investment in our hospital, which is the largest single investment in healthcare in this community's history, and we're really excited about. To your perspective, the original hospital build was about $11 million in 1999, so speaks to the cost of construction, but also the scope of what we're doing. So, phase one of our project is to basically build a complete replacement emergency room, and then we'll also be adding an InstaCare, which is our urgent care center for non-emergent needs, on a walk-in basis, and that'll be open seven days a week. We're also bringing in an in-house MRI, so right now, we do MRI imaging out of a mobile trailer, we come three days a week, this will give us a full-time, dedicated, seven-day-a-week availability, so for outpatients as well as for those who are coming into the ER who might need that service, so we're really excited about that as well. And then we have some other minor physical plant expansions that are taking place. Phase two, which I'm really excited about, and that'll start probably mid-year next year, we'll also continue that expansion, we'll be expanding our physician clinics, so those of you who are familiar with the hospital campuses, you drive up to the campus on the left-hand side, there are a bank of physician clinics, we'll be renovating and expanding those clinics as well, to make way for new providers and specialists to come to the community over the coming years, as part of our plan. We'll also be adding a new cafe, which we're excited about as well, the original hospital kitchen and cafe was actually, and those of you who've been and have seen, it's pretty small, and it was actually built to be a warm-in kitchen, so the food can be brought up, heated, and then served, but we wanna, our goal is to go to a room-service style of presentation, where we can actually, we can cook up whatever a patient would like, and also invite the community into the facility as well, and make a meeting space, so we're excited about that. Then we'll have some other ancillary areas that'll be added on as part of our expansion. And then, the kind of the part that certainly would impact those of you who are residents of Daniel is, which we're hoping to reorient the entrance to the campus, to the hospital campus, so right now, you enter off of, I'm blanking on the street number, but the main hospital entrance that comes on the campus, we're actually looking to reorient that so that it would be off of 1200 South, which really is one of the busiest roads in Heber, but would also then have a connection back to 40, so we'd essentially have a loop road that would come in on 1200 South, there'd be a spur that would connect down to the hospital, then we'd have a second access off of 40 on the east side, to give EMS and fire multiple entrances, so that's exciting, we're working with the city and the fire departments to make that happen as well. So that'll be included in phase two, which again, I expect to start in July, and hopefully be done by late 2019, when we actually finish up that portion of the project. Phase one, though, which is the ER, the InstaCare, and the MRI is slated for, the ER component will open around May 1st, the InstaCare and the InstaCare should be a little bit ahead of schedule, probably mid to late March, so we're coming up pretty quickly, and so we'll be able to have that open in a couple months' time. So excited about that, but can I answer any questions about the expansion?
Yeah. How, the footprint-wise, how much bigger is it gonna be?
With, in these two phases that we have going on, or just long, long-term? So, we have, square footage-wise, I can't give you the exact number off the top of my head, it's not a significant increase in square footage, I mean, the core of our hospital isn't really moving and changing much, we have some long-term master plan expansion that would grow the inpatient side of things, probably the biggest expansion is that ER that's going on, and I probably, I don't have the square footage off the top of my head.
Oh, that's okay, but it won't double at all?
It won't, I wouldn't say it's a double.
Maybe in a quarter or half?
Yeah, I'd say probably a quarter of square footage. We have enough acreage that, long-term, you know, talking 30 to 40 years out, we have the ability to actually build a replacement hospital and be in place, and to operate in place while the replacement hospital was being built, and that's, you know, certainly weighs down the road as well. So we've been able to put together a nice piece of property to allow our master plan to come together. Any other questions that I can?
Yes, have you been to Heber City yet?
I have.
I was wondering, because when you're talking about the access?
Oh, yes.
We did a Highway 40 corridor agreement that we've been involved with, and we're looking at signalizing that intersection, and continuing that to the other side of the road, so that's a future signalized intersection, and I wondered how that, if your main entrance is off of 12?
Right. You're referring to the entrance off 40 or the entrance?
Correct.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the main entrance would be off of 12, we have that connection, though, and that's gonna be a city road that would connect through.
Right.
So we're gonna build our portion basically from 1200 South, essentially to the hospital here, just there. We've been working with the city, though, as we've kind of master-planned that piece as well, so I know there's, since that's an inbound road as well, there's, so I don't know when Ian's announced that piece, but, does that answer your question?
It does, yeah, I just wanted to, and after we puddle our work into that agreement for two, three years, that that corridor, that actually crosses 40 and then comes into Daniel, so we're really limited on how, how many exits we have, and at this point, I hate to see one go away, that's, because we went near market and that's future signalized intersection, when that call comes, so.
Yeah, so I think the idea would be for that, that new loop road to be a signalized intersection.
So you'll, it sounds like you'll have access off those.
Correct, yeah.
Super. Thank you.
That'll probably be a very busy intersection.
Could they?
Go through the, the wide path.
Yes, go ahead, please. So how, where does the 31 million come from?
Yeah, great, that's a great question, so most of that comes from bond issues and intermountain issues for debt, but we also, we are engaging the community in philanthropy opportunity as well, so we are doing some fundraising to give the community opportunity to invest in that as well. And we, yeah, please, go ahead.
I just wondered about the bonds, so do the communities surrounding the hospital enter into a bond, or?
No, they actually, that's, since we're privately owned by Intermountain Healthcare, Intermountain would actually issue that bond, working with our lenders that we have those traditions.
Oh, okay. The securities out to the, to the state.
Correct, yeah, exactly. So the community's contribution to that via philanthropy helps us to reduce the amount of that bond, which ultimately helps us keep down the cost of borrowing, and allows us to keep from passing that cost over to patients as well, so when you think about in terms of philanthropy, that's the way that that investment can really impact the cost of care and have that access.
Guys, I have one comment, I have my first grandchild born in your hospital here in town, and the whole experience is awesome, all the nurses, all the, everyone, so I've been riding up when you're starting, but kudos to everybody.
Thank you.
Great chance for all of us.
I'll pass it over to the team, thank you.
I wanted to give you one positive.
That's great, I'm glad to hear that, yeah. And you lead into a, you know, really my main message for tonight is, is my goal is for the community to think of Heber Valley Hospital, they think about healthcare, so if you need to access healthcare for any reason, then we want to be able to meet the majority of your needs. Now, recognizing that we're part of a larger system, we're not gonna replicate services that you might get in some of our larger, complex medical centers, you know, for example, really advanced oncology services may not be something that we offer here, but we want to be able to tie you to our network of hospitals, either in Utop Valley, or in Salt Lake County, or elsewhere, to be able to receive that care, but we hope that you'll think of us first, as a place that can meet your needs, and I think we've worked really hard to provide high-quality care, and a great experience, which is the one that you've ever had, and we try to do that as consistently as you would receive on any of our other facilities and anywhere in Utop. So, I'd love, I'd welcome feedback from any of you in the room, feel free to reach out to me at the hospital, or email, if you know Amy Dunham, who's our PR director, or via our Facebook page, or any of those things, to give us that feedback. We love good stories that we can help share with the rest of the community, we want to get the word out about the great work that's been done in our facility, and there's some extraordinary caregivers there. We've recruited a number of physicians over the last three or four years, so now we have obstetricians and gynecologists who practice here in our community, we have two who also complement our family practice physicians, who do obstetrics and deliver, we have orthopedics, we're doing knee replacements, hip replacements, and other procedures in our facility, we have board-certified emergency medical physicians in our emergency room, which has been a huge transition for us, really excited about that. The growth, the community's really embraced that service, and we've seen extreme growth over the last few years, we're excited to be able to, that we're a level-four trauma center, so we can handle anything that Park City can handle, and a number of other, other intermountain facilities, and then we're connected into our system. We still get patients who come to us with a heart attack, we get them down and in the cath lab within 90 minutes, which is incredible, really incredible to do at some of our system facilities, so, again, my goal is for us to be the destination here for those of you who seek healthcare, we hope you don't, but if you do, we want to be the place that you think of and come to.
So will there be an ER physician there all the time now?
There is, and we have that for some time, so we at least have one on, and we have a second on-call to come in if we have that bullies of physicians. A couple of our family practice physicians still rotate through, and they're excellent doctors, with a lot of critical care experience, and they still rotate through our ER, but we're almost, I would say probably about 90% board-certified emergency physicians, and it's full 24/7. Also, our laboratory is 24/7 as well, and we have imaging services available 24/7 as well.
So with the renovation of these offices, are we adding more?
We are, so we, we have a recruitment plan that goes out about five years in terms of new physicians, so we have specialties, again, such as more primary care, so we have some more family practice in terms of medicine physicians, we're looking at some improvement around urology, orthopedics is an area that we're just bringing in a new physician, we do shoulders in our facility as well, so we do have some growth, and really with the intent of trying to match the demand that you have in the community.
Yeah, I think we're falling short right now, I mean, if you try and get an appointment, you're three weeks out, and it's like, wow, but I can echo what the mayor said, because my daughter just had one, so they're still doing good, they're doing awesome over there, super.
And that is a real challenge, you hit on a point, we are, historically, healthcare's not done a great job of meaning, organizing ourselves around what the patient needs in terms of access, we sort of ask patients to work around our schedules, and we're really working hard to try to think of some novel approaches, so that we can deliver care when you need it, where you need it. We have our Connect Care service now, which is available across the state, where you can actually, via an iPad or your phone, you can dial in and have a physician right there to help, but some of the minor things, you know, minor coughs and colds kind of things, and if, if they can't help you, they'll connect you to the right place, you know, we're looking at things across the system in terms of what hours do we keep, I think the walk-in clinic here's been a great example of that, we recognize there's a need, the folks who need to walk in.
It's a lifesaver.
Which is, we're, I'm glad that that's been the case, and we hope the InstaCare helps to build off of that, so, thank you.
That's a good one.
Any other questions that I can?
Thank you.
Thanks for the time, appreciate it. I did bring some, just some collateral, which I'll leave with council members if that's okay.
Okay.
And just details a little bit more our expansion.
Then we'll probably have some questions.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You bet, thanks for having me.
Good luck with the new job.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you.
Soon as I see you.
Yeah, one more alone.
Okay, great, sure to get updated about that kind of stuff. Takes it down to item number three, the chair will entertain a motion to come out of regular session and go into a public hearing.
Do you want to second it?
Let me have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We're now in the public hearing regarding community development block grant for 2018. I have a prepared statement that I have to read as is, so bear with me for a moment. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the community development block grant program, and to allow for discussion of possibility applications for the 2018 funding cycle. The grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and moderate income persons. The Mountland Association of Governments, in which Daniel Town is a member, is expecting to receive approximately $600,000 in this new program year. All eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDVG application policies and procedures manual, and interested persons can review it at any time. Examples of the eligible activities include things such as construction of public works and facilities, water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisitions of real property, provisions of public services such as food banks and home shelters, or low-income housing. In the past, Daniel Town has received $318,000 in 2009, and $290,835 in 2010, and $50,000 in 2011, for expansion and improvement of the municipal culinary water system, and most recently, $44,800 in 2015, used to upgrade water meters and the pump house facilities at Stormhaven. Daniel Town has handed out its capital investment plan as part of the original consolidated plan. This list shows which projects the town has identified as being needed in the community. At this time, I would like, excuse me, at this time, I would ask that anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions for any of them, please identify yourself by name before you speak, the clerk will include the names in a minute, and we would like to specifically respond to your questions and suggestions. So I will open that up to anyone that would like to make a comment or suggestion.
Pam Skinner, can we use any of this money for crazy acres of water and sewer problems? Can we get grants for their issues?
We could, I'll maybe turn that over to Ryan a little bit, there's, there's...
There'd be monies for them, for the people there that aren't that small.
Each year we identify issues, and there could be a year that that is identified as an issue that we want to do, this last pass, we've kind of already got that particular issue, which is that same water one we tried last year, so at this point, that's what we're looking at, but if there's something else, we'd be glad to certainly look at what priority that might add, so, that be correct, Ryan?
Yeah, I think the purpose of this meeting is to talk about possible candidate projects, and that certainly, you know, we've identified, we've identified more money than they have up there, that could be well-spent, but there may be other needs in the community, so.
Certainly keep that in mind, this will come up and, yeah.
Seems that it might be a need for some extra money to help those folks out.
Any other comment, questions?
Is that, is that the only project we have?
Well, we gotta turn the time over, we have to have the public, turn the time over to Ryan.
One question, is there any talk or plans about low-income housing, about low-income housing?
It's come up, but haven't really gone very far, so.
Well, we just ended up working with the state on the low-income housing requirements is, if any, and they just did this on most municipalities, if any is removed, that it's been replaced, and so that's one of the new requirements of affordable housing, if we take out affordable housing unit from someplace, we need to make sure we designate that that can be built within the town boundaries again, and so we just started that process, and that's new from the legislature this year, but.
And in that move, that would be a municipality moving low-income homes, not a private individual or anything, that'd be a...
Right, yeah, that's what's happening in some of the cities, they're taking low-income housing, undevelopment, and then, and then it's gone, so that's been a hot issue because of the housing costs, and I think this county especially is really very aware of that, so we have a very active...
We have a pretty big problem, in my opinion, in this county with low-income housing and the price of homes and real estate and that's...
Versus wages, huh?
Well, and Park City's low-income housing is, you know, almost double what our low-income housing is.
It's a popular area.
Yeah, so, those ratios can be stunning, I've seen a few, and I don't know how they consider that low, I have personal formulas, it's definitely something that's gonna need more attention, for sure. Ryan, I'll turn the time over to you, if you have any...
Well, Pam already hit on it, I know there's a number of projects up in the Stormhaven area, last year we applied for a new well, and I still think, despite how bad we really need storage, that given the funds and the priorities and the concerns the state has, that that's, that's probably the top project still that I would recommend we apply for, unless the government comes up, is to try to drill that new well and get the old ones and all its faults off of the system.
Will we be looking at the same specs as what we have with the Daniel, or we don't ask deep or ask big?
It probably, I don't think it needs to be as deep, and I don't think we need to make quite the same GPM, the Daniel well's 800 feet deep, it makes about 400 gallons a minute, it's a huge stormhaven, we don't need 400 gallons a minute, the bigger discussion would be is in the backup well for the community as a whole, and so right now, I'm thinking of course, a preliminary number to four, three, four, maybe 500 feet at most, with a target of 100 to 200 gallons a minute, but there is, there is merit to going deeper and bigger just because it's uphill, so any water we get could run downhill, not only to the rest of the town, but the rest of the valley.
The reason I bring that up is because there's a public notice out right now, with regards to the building better systems and additional water being piped in that direction, so there, tend away in some options that we thought probably wasn't gonna go that direction, but it might be.
I saw that, I think the timing, though, will be, I mean, they're gonna either pipe it or not, on the public notice, they're gonna make that decision, but, yeah, that's...
Is that adding a whole pipe?
Yeah, that's one way it treats over to, and to feed the water, so they're at capacity right now.
So the other, the alternative would be they could become part of the Stormhaven system, and, and we could supply them with water to this new well, if it were successful. I would want to make sure it's successful before we make that promise, though.
Have you had outside discussions about that, and any particular thoughts?
About Billy Brothers?
About how that might be able to work together with Stormhaven or not?
I have, we've got the water model, and our overall master plan for the town encompasses the system we have, the municipal system, the Billy Brothers system, and Stormhaven, and I've looked at the system pressures and how to integrate them all into one regional system.
And that takes me back to the question, for is the application, your side of the application for this year's for Stormhaven, it's kind of mostly been known to town, hasn't it, it's ours cost?
Yeah, if we repeat the same project as last year, I'll need to update the cost with new construction numbers, but it's largely done, that's correct.
Ryan, clarify those, you said storage is one of the big items, and then also a new well?
No, so, you and I've talked, storage is the biggest concern I have, because we've got that one little tank that requires booster pumps, the booster pumps go out all the time, and so what we'd really like to see, what I'd really like to see is a tank up on the hill like we did with the municipal system, so when, one, pumps can run a lot longer, more efficiently, two, when they go out, we get one to two weeks to figure out what we want to do about it.
Would the existing well and pump push water up on the hill to this new storage tank?
The existing pump would not, but the existing well could produce the same gallons per minute with a different pump that would push water as high as it needed to, so we could use the existing well for storage. The problem, the concern I have with storage is one, on the priorities drinking water has, they have the well, the source higher than the storage, and so we get more support from drinking water if we address their top priority first, and second, CDVG doesn't have enough money for a water tank, at least not the, not the sizable one we ultimately need, and so we have to combine it with other funds.
They have 600,000 available statewide, is that correct?
Well, for Los Angeles and Southern County, they have 600,000 available, and we would need all of that and a little more for the water tank we would like to build. The well's a cheaper project, and so it's kind of taken a low-hanging proof.
How big would the storage tank be?
In the master plan, we proposed a 300,000 gallon tank, if we, depending on some discussions that have been had about serving parts of Independence and the Billy Brothers system, I'd suggest that when that one air on the side is a little bigger. It's a lot easier to build a little more capacity into an existing tank than try to build a second one right next to it.
Yeah, one we have from municipal, is that somewhere around the 900?
Yeah, it'd be something, just 100 million. And so as much as I'd love to build a tank, I think the well is where we need to shoot for a CDVG.
Do we have a spot?
Yes. So, generally, it's on that property we own at the Stormhaven, where the booster station is now.
Oh, we're drilling on that side.
Yeah, so getting, getting out of the backyards, which is one of the deficiencies we have with the existing well, further away from the flood plain, we're not, the well's not in the flood plain, about two feet, so we'd like to get a little further away than that, and then up a property we own, so we're not going through backyards to get it another two minutes on it, that would be one.
They just like to canal, go over a while, we're gonna look for it.
Ryan, is it possible that that existing Daniel well now, that has capacity, is pretty good?
Yes.
And pipe that to Stormhaven?
Yes. The pipe would cost more than the new well, but yes.
How about if we were to put the storage tank high on the hill in between those two points, so that we pump only have that way and then deliver?
That works, we still need to run a pipe, although, you know, to at least the bottom of the system, I found the property owner who was willing to donate the property, if we agreed to give him some connections to some homes he'd like to build, which seemed like a pretty good deal, that location's basically across the street from Haven Estate, so it's most of the way up the highway, and so we can certainly correct those numbers again, when I did that last year, the booster station, assuming we reused pumps we already had, and installing the water line was more expensive than drilling a second well.
Where do you need a booster station, in between the well and the...
Between our municipal pump station and the tank that we would need in Stormhaven, you have to have a, we're up about another 200 feet.
That'd kill it, I think, right there.
So, I'm happy to look at it, it's a great idea, because we have extra capacity in the municipal system right now.
When we get ready to do that budget by the end of January, is that a simple model to throw in?
Yeah, I just need to update cost estimates both ways, I think the pump station gets pretty expensive pretty fast.
But the water maintenance?
But I like the idea, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's in the master plan to do both eventually, is that we can pump water from...
Both ways?
Both ways, so that, you know, increasing the redundancy, improving the reliability of the system, so.
Okay.
It's on the list, I went with the one that worked out cheapest last time, I think we should do the same this time, and maybe it is, we do have that pump, the old pump that we replaced, that's still in the old pump station, that, looking at the pump curve, it's far from efficient, but it does get water from 200 feet, and so when I did the master plan, and we were looking at that as an emergency kind of backup, my suggestion was to just reuse that pump, as inefficient as it is, if you're in an emergency situation, you don't really care, and the cost on it's right, and I know the owner, he might be willing to work with us.
Maybe.
Maybe, might not, you know, I don't guarantee.
So, anyway, but I think we can look at that both ways, if we're running it full-time, I would probably... time, I would probably want to look at optimizing that pump a little more. Cause I'd hate to save fifty thousand dollars on pump and then have a five thousand dollar power bill forever.
Well, it'll still work as a backup pump on that system.
Still a great backup, I agree. If we're gonna run it all the time, I want to make sure we probably want to get the money on the right pump, not just one that's close enough. When it's an emergency pump, you can throw efficiency out the window and let it run.
Ryan, how much is the new well?
Last year we had, last year we had asked for a quarter million dollars. And I suspect this year well prices, some things have gone up, other things have gone down. At the end of the day, I'll bet it's about the same.
Any other questions with regards to the public hearing?
So on that, it sounds like if it's a quarter million, probably gonna go up anything. Are we asking for half of the CDBG funds for the county?
A little less than half, yeah. Last year we asked for exactly half.
It seems like, I don't know, is there any way we could ask for maybe a quarter or a third? Cause I think we might have a stronger, a stronger case, a stronger proposal.
We can look at funding the other part, other component with other funds. So additional bonds or grants or loans. And last year, other funding was really hard to come by. Loans are a little easier to get right now. Grants are still very, very tight. But that's certainly a possibility. If we did that, I think it's a reasonable discussion. With the municipal system, we got a CDBG grant and use a CDBG grant for the well was ultimately how it worked out. And then use the SRF loan and grant to build the water tank and pump station. If we were gonna do multiple funding sources, I would say we should discuss going big with, you know, doing something similar. Asking for a bond through SRF for a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of paperwork and a lot of legal costs for not a lot of money. We might want to just build the well and the tank, you know, to do a similar project, a much bigger, get it all done at once kind of project.
It just seems like we've been successful CDBG when we didn't ask for, you know, so much of the kitty.
Yes.
And I know they can come back and say, well, we'll give you X amount of money. But I think they kind of shy away from that and want to fund projects fully that they can.
Right. And I know we've done a lot of, a lot of times with projects, we've been flexible with that. We've said, well, give us, you know, if you can't give us the full amount, give us what you can and we'll install half the water lines or half the customers. The problem with a well is you go down deep enough to get the water or you don't. There's, you know, filling half a well doesn't work. So we've got to, we can go for half, but then we have to find the other half somewhere else.
Yeah.
You know, I made some comments last time. I felt somewhat comfortable last time when the person didn't get anything. This year, there was less people, once again, in that mandatory meeting, which is quite surprising. There was all other water issues, but we, I totally concur with what you just said. I think that the amount, if we were lower, we could have served enough something. But what Ryan says is we can't do it for less than X, this particular case, in that, in this particular one.
So I mean, another option would be to keep the well and the tank we have for now and work on transmission lines. There's no shortage of things to do up there. Started with the highest priority where most of our points are coming from. And then the problems that we've had up there. And so far, knock on wood, the well's continuing to produce water. I'm still not sure how that well makes enough water for all of the connections that are on it, but it seems to.
I think I know the answer to this, but CDB, they don't let you submit kind of a, here's our first proposal. If you can't fund that, here's our second.
They'd let us submit multiple projects, but they would rank them, I mean, they would, one would rank higher than the other. And so you wouldn't, you know, you could potentially get both, I guess, but you could also lose. So they don't, to your point, they really don't let you submit multiple projects. And they, you know, fund this one, but if you can't, here's a backup project.
Yeah.
But they do let you submit, we could make multiple submittals. And so maybe, you know, we could submit one for the well at a quarter million dollars or whatever it lands at and say, this is what we really want to do. And if that doesn't work, one point behind it, here's our backup project for fifty thousand dollar water line upgrade.
Yeah.
Or a little more. I think if you replace all the water lines, it's a lot more, but it's a good start.
Well, do you think that would be a good idea or not? You probably have a lot of ideas on this too.
So John, so we could discuss, and we need to have our proposal by January thirtieth.
Do we have time?
Between then and then, I'd love to hear, you brought up some ideas. As far as, I know, we've got our models already kind of planned for this particular year, but for what you're just saying, we would have till January thirtieth to present it. So are they making an agenda item or are we just communicating on it?
We will have to do a new LMI survey because ours is.
Yeah, that's right. So that survey you did way back when and then we did it again back when, that is actually gonna have to happen again as well.
And that takes a lot of time. Do we, when do we have to have that done, Mike?
Actually, kind of quick. I want to say.
It's part of the application that's due.
By January thirty first.
And that takes a lot of time.
Is that the entire town? Is that?
Just Stormhaven.
That's the service area, so.
Well, we know how to get them here.
Oh, by the way, if we're on the agenda item, why are you here?
Ryan, don't you have to have at least seventy percent?
Yes. That is a very high number. And I agree. I did it. I helped last time. Knocked on a lot of doors.
Yeah. Some people don't want to give you the information. Certainly I can understand issues like that, but you're running into challenges.
But when we left the meeting around and talked about the new survey, the folks that have been at some of these meetings, or quite a few of them, and I think hopefully this, they may not know about the survey, but once we start, they might understand why we're there at this time.
That's true. I'd argue we may or may not want to include the Billy Brothers system. And they've got the public hearing for the water line. I don't know what their timing to actually build the water line is. But if we were to be funded for a well, they may want to reconsider. The residents in the town, if we were redoing the LMI, and it does, the bigger survey, it makes getting seventy percent easier.
Yeah.
Seventy percent's a lot, but if you get three people that say no and you're interviewing, you know, ten, you're in trouble. If you're interviewing a hundred, you get, you get a few people that say no and still get your seventy percent.
You need what, thirty, I mean, is there sixty something?
There's fifty-four connections up there. And we have, and we've got a detailed map with all the lots we got last time. And we can certainly go through and do that again. I think like we just went through the rate here, you know, the rate increase and have their attention a little bit. I think that we could get them to help, you know, look, this is an effort to save money. But and see if we can get them help. But it still takes this group a fair amount of effort.
So with this being on the table at the moment, we probably need to decide on who and what and when can organize this survey. And all eyes are on you, Ryan, as far as maybe organizing.
For Lisa.
Yeah, yeah. And she probably, she probably, she probably would love to if she, yeah, maybe not, I don't know. But there's a few people up there, you can call, you can call, but if you can, you spearhead it so we can get her done.
Well, so I think it's certainly easy enough to dust off the maps and what we did last time. If I'm correct, we need to get that reapproved through CDBG before we do it. Because just cause they approved it last time doesn't mean it's okay this time.
The prep.
So we need to get the process approved. But the maps of the, the maps of the survey area, the parcels and all that are already done. So it'll be easy enough to get that put together, submitted to CDBG and then get Lisa on board to help get the actual surveys done. Cause that was the time consuming part last time.
Yeah.
You had to go door to door and you knock on doors and people went home. So you had to go back another time and they worked the same hour you did. So every time.
Well, I'm honest, we did it the same time of year. So at six o'clock, it's dark and you're knocking on doors and that's not very comfortable.
I think we should just send a letter, said we underestimated, we need to double it again. They'll all come.
And then just sit in here?
For the survey, right?
By the way, do the survey.
There's a process that carried out his thing.
So are you gonna move ahead with that, Ryan? Do you need to do anything to, you need some help?
I'll get the maps. I mean, the maps and what we did last time dusted off. And then if I can work with Lynn, we'll get that resubmitted and approved. I'm assuming what we did last time can be approved again?
Right. CDBG will send us the survey form that we need to use.
Yeah, oh yeah.
But I can get the service area map. I guess the question, do we want to add Billy Brothers? Or do we want to just stick with Stormhaven?
Well, no, there's obviously been a change in attitude on that system. I mean, they were pretty anxious to give that to us.
And did we include it last time?
No. Last time we did just the Stormhaven area.
And would, you may know that particular water system, think that that might increase or decrease that seventy percent issue?
I don't know that I have any idea. I know from the surveys last time, there was some pretty good surprises in there. And you just, you don't know.
Who's Billy Brothers?
Right there. Who is he? Tiny twister.
It's fourteen homes right along here. So there's a water tank right up, right there.
Is this forty?
Yeah, this is forty. This is Will Street Road. Here's homes on the south side of Will Street Road right here. They make up, it's called the Billy Brothers system. There's like fourteen connections.
Fourteen?
Fourteen or sixteen, but not very many.
Wow. That's, that's all modern, is it?
Yes.
It's operating by.
Okay.
And it's a spring, not a well?
It's a spring, a well. If you don't get the seventy percent, then what?
Then you don't, we're not qualified to apply for money.
Well, should there be a backup or like a backup plan to use the water or to apply for?
So when we've done it in the past, you've worked on that survey until you get your seventy percent. Which is where you say it'll work. But there's doors you go knock on five and six and seven times.
Because we just wouldn't be eligible to even put in for it unless we have the seventy percent.
So I'm just asking, that's only a suggestion that it was Stormhaven well then?
It is. And the last meeting that you've been into, so, you know, the rates of just to increase were pretty hefty. Could be even more than that, just to even get, just to be able to qualify for something other than what we're trying to qualify for.
Can your two oh eight facility plan, you list some of these projects in there. Like US forty, the Mill Road, three hundred and fifty, two thousand, that was in two oh eight. So that thirty percent.
So you got her.
You know what? I'd run when you say Billy Brothers. But let go to Twin Creek. But that's just my personal opinion. I would just as soon say, hey, let's, let's try to get a tank up there and try to get two hundred or three hundred thousand. And that's, that's the best move for everybody. And as far as getting surveys up there, I think the town has got the intention of Crazy Acres, Tammy Lane, Stormhaven. And all we need to do is pick the right person, just waltz through those fourteen, fifteen neighborhoods. You know, I think the Heinz in Crazy Acres. I mean, he'd be a good one. Lisa up in Stormhaven, Tammy Lane. I don't, I don't know who that person would be there. We could probably find her. That's on the surveys alone.
Right.
When I look at some of, this is two oh eight, and it talks about Cove Lane and Tankham Road and numbers here, they're just, they're unbelievable. The cost. I mean, I look back when I'm going through some of this older estimation and act in the actual cost itself. In fact, I even have the bids here, Ryan, in all the alternates. We had about four different alternates and ended up doing all of them. Somebody decided now that it's time to do it. And we're watching, we can get this bond for a half a percent. It's just amazing to come up with those kind of numbers. You're talking four million dollars. Well, to do what we want to up around that area, according to the two oh eight facility plan, you're talking another four million bucks.
And the last figure was three and a half to do it all.
I believe it was a little over two and a half, but.
Two and a half?
That was.
With the tank.
Those are our numbers. So I don't know, but three and a half is too far out. So Kim, there's two different numbers. There's the overall, there's the whole town integrated and then we did a separate one. We broke out, after two oh eight, we broke out Stormhaven and its own entity and came up with numbers just for that area. But you're right. And this, the two thousand fourteen update, which was just the fee update, the, we have a total of seven million dollars in improvements, which is split about three and a half upgrades and three and a half improvements.
Well, and I don't think the average person realizes all this because when you go buy a new house and you go to deal with Heber City, you know, the contractor that put their development in and the contractor that's building the homes, you know, they might have went to Heber City and said, well, you know, bring us the sewer, bring us the water. And there's, there's impact fees on that fifty thousand dollars. Well, nobody knows that because it's built into all that cost and then you go get your four hundred thousand dollar mortgage for thirty years. So it doesn't jump at you. But you take the situation that goes on in Stormhaven and in that area, and you take fifty-four water users and all of a sudden they need three million dollars. What are you gonna do, charge thirty-five thousand apiece?
That'll get them to the meeting.
Well, and that's, that's the whole Billy Brothers issue that happened to them with those fourteen users. It was not a good situation. And that's kind of some of our first thoughts back when is we really don't want that to happen.
They do have a tank up on the hill with, I think it's twenty thousand gallons and I think it's fairly new. I mean, that, maybe that can be reported again to Twin Creek, to something else.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause see where you're pushing that. I haven't mentioned that we're about thirty-five feet from the pipe of our line. It's over half of our pipeline running up, so.
Just for interest, the Ranch Road back from the two thousand eight numbers, right? We'd estimated two hundred and forty thousand dollars to put in that Ranch Drive water line. And so we did it for under two hundred, we're right around two hundred thousand. So these numbers, with the ups and the downs and the back and the forth, might not, you know, might be back to about right again.
Interesting. How close was it?
Well, so our bid was a hundred and sixty plus the engineering. So a hundred and eighty right around. We rounded to two hundred thousand and that was two forty-three. Cause in two thousand eight was the facility plan, but I was using two thousand six and seven numbers to do it. So we're probably right about back to where we were. We're, I mean, cause I agree, we can add a few dollars to it, but I think if you follow the cycle, we're back to the same point. So we might not be too far off, I guess, I'm gonna say.
You won't be right off.
I guarantee.
Okay, for wrapping up, as far as the public hearing goes, any other discussion or?
Just maybe one thing. So Ryan, do you think that by our next meeting in December, we could have the, have CDBG give us the survey? Do you think we could have things approved and have them develop that survey so that by our next meeting, we'd be ready to?
I think we can get stuff submitted to them and in a couple of weeks to ask for that. So I would think a two week turnaround would be reasonable, but I certainly don't want to promise how fast they might turn stuff around.
And little bit of suggestion quite a bit on this in the recent days and weeks.
Well, Michelle Carroll's the one that, but they know that they, we want to get it done. You can't do it in the dead of winter. You know, the sooner the better.
And they did another, it's compiled like a week or so after we met a few weeks ago and so.
They encouraged us to have the meeting, the public hearing as quick as we could, you know, submit for the, getting maps to them and just move forward on a very quick pace.
So by our December meeting, we could likely have surveys?
Would be finished, hopefully. We're close to it.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Any other thing left on the public hearing? If not, a challenge, a motion to close the public hearing and go back to regular session.
So move.
Number first?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? And just so, I can go and make that one motion to go out, not the need to on that. Not a motion that we can add.
Yes.
So we're back in regular session, which means we're at item number four.
If you're the mayor, you can do whatever.
No, no, I can't actually. Four, number four is business license applicants. Now you got the twister.
Sorry.
Okay, let me make a comment with regards to last time, what we pulled with regards to payment and business licenses and what we talked about. I got a little bit of clarity from David on that.
Do you want to do that, one key? Or do you want to do it now?
Well, one has to do with just licenses. I mean, it's a quick call. I mean, there is going to be some, is not very clear with regard to payment on that or not. I've not received a written demo. I was just kind of told to proceed as we are and if something needs to be changed, go change it. Just continue on the same process. And I can have a letter this week or whenever.
Okay. So we still work on that.
On that particular one, yeah.
Okay. Well, we might as well have Jeremy come up. We have a new application here. So if you guys, this is Jeremy and he's proposing heating and air conditioning. So you got any questions for him?
Welcome to our town.
Welcome to our town.
So, you're going to be a home business, it takes? And I don't know, are you aware, we're in the middle and have been for quite some time on dealing with home businesses and, okay. Is there anything that you've heard that would cause you a problem, meaning the storage on sites and some of the vehicles and employees come to your house and things?
It's, I'm, I'm the only employee right now, probably will be for the next year or so, I'm just trying to get it off the ground. We have a little storage shed in the back, but most of my material is bought at the supply house, I want to go down the job. So there won't be a whole lot of storage, anything scrap, once the bucket's full, I take it, that's not going to be part of the lot. And furnaces pretty much go right to the recycle yard, if I take them out, or I take them out to my dad's house in the ham store in Charleston.
Where'd that never go?
You ain't a long time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, have you seen the forty cars he had behind that fence? It's, he's been there a while.
Any question from the council?
So what kind of services are you doing?
Mostly what I'm gonna be doing is retro furnace change out, air conditioning service. I'm trying to stay out of new construction, it's not working very well. Just because people are building, you know, homeowner builders can't find somebody to do the work, and if I'm available, I'll do it. But mostly service and retro, like I said, mostly everything is just on my local menu now.
Like, is there private service trucker vans at your house, you go out and do your thing, order your stuff in, do your thing?
Yeah, yeah, most, most everything, right now, I'm ordering out of Vernal, because I used to work out there. And I pick it up once a week, or once a month, and.
So what kind of licensing from the state is that required?
I've got my S three fifty, which is an HVAC license.
Okay.
I've got my liability and my work ones comp, so I've got everything. All my bases are covered on that, so. And I can get a copy of the liability on the S three fifty, if you guys need it.
Have you, have you had a chance to look at the eight twenty-five that we've been working on?
Definitely.
We're right in the middle, well, we're not in the middle, we don't even know where we're at.
The last, the last one.
Been a deal of our own for a couple of years now. So what we've been trying to do is regulate some of the small businesses and the impact that they have. And I guess mainly what we're coming down to is complaint driven, will be a lot of this new, so just want you to be aware of it.
Yeah, no, I, if, if there's an issue, I, you know, neighbors and stuff like that, I'm hoping they come and say something, but.
No, you'll see me.
Well, the only one I have is Ollie, and that's just because, you know, we throw stuff back and forth across the fence.
Are you busy tomorrow?
What's that?
Are you busy tomorrow?
Are you looking on Ollie? Um, I'd have to look at my calendar. I'm, I'm pretty booked this week, next week isn't as bad.
I'm finding out that most of the trades are pretty busy when it comes to trying to take care of the general public.
I, I drove back and forth to Salt Lake for about six months doing this, and I'd come home, and people knew I did it, so they'd call me and come fix their air conditioner. And I was working twelve hours in Salt Lake and six hours here, and then I just finally made the decision of why I went driving to Salt Lake every day. And that's just it, most people don't answer the phone for service, and I'm more than happy to answer it, and.
You know, if you drive around town, you might bump into some electricians or plumbers or other people in the town of Daniel. Be a good idea to talk to them, because they have been involved with some of this procedure and code at the time, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know Adam Knight pretty well.
In fact, we've got a couple of folks here tonight that have struggled with this, and they're, they're in the trucking business, not, not trades, but it, it has been a real challenge to try and satisfy that residential segment, the town and agriculture, and then also trying to accommodate small business. But I think one of the biggest challenges.
I'm hoping, I mean, I'm, obviously, in the next year, if business grows, which it is, I may bring on another employee, and then it may be time to, you know, get a building. Right now, it's just me and occasionally my wife, if she'll help. But I, I mean, I know Adam Knight.
Sounds like she's got one employee.
What's that?
Sounds like she's got one.
Oh, she's got an employee. I mean, I, I know Adam Knight pretty well. I, I worked at Standard Plumbing Supply for eight years. I've been either in the, in the supply house or in the field for about eighteen years, so.
Adam's been here to the meeting, so you can go to talk about.
And I, you know, I just, you know, the whole essence of what we've been working on is, you know, whatever you're doing, you, you want to look at it and deal with it, the rest of your, your neighbors probably don't, and that's kind of the essence of it all, and I'd advise you kind, we're not even down yet, but we're really close, hopefully. And we'll go from there.
Want to call for the motion, man?
Sarah Coleman would be another one to talk to.
Yeah, yeah. I've dealt with you, I think, at Standard and other places many years ago, so.
A call for motion as far as accepting this business license application and business life business. You have a motion, first?
So move.
Your motion, your second?
Second.
Your motion is second? Any discussion? All in favor?
So, maybe, maybe some quick discussion.
Okay.
It says, like, in here that there's a lot of stuff that needs to be provided, written down, is that, has that been provided, or is that?
There, you're looking at the eight twenty-five, right?
Yeah, and I know it's not approved yet, but.
This one even come here, once that's approved, this will be the planning commission.
Yeah, so we're, we're definitely operating on the old one, the, the particular application. But you're right, you know, there's things in here that this would have to, this was adopted, that it'd have to do with that.
So if this does need to turn, okay, then we.
Is eight twenty-five still on the website? The draft of this new?
The latest version of the draft is not there, but I can post it.
And then John.
Copy right there, if you want.
Okay. And John had a question, if this met the old criteria as far as business license, of what's required to be submitted and stuff like that, do we, do we know that?
I think he's got, well, that, everything on applications there, so.
I said, I can get him, I mean, if he needed a copy, I have my S three fifty with me here, my liability, I can get all that, if, if that's what that's asking for.
Yeah, and I see your, you've put your license number down.
I just don't remember the old code well, code well enough to say, you know, like, here, here, in the future, we're gonna have to list business hours and operation and stuff like that. I don't know if the old code speaks to that or not.
Well, I think, I think what you have here, though, you have a, a person that's working out of their home. They're not working at their home, so business hours will be a car leaving.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm Monday through Friday, nine to five, and I do operate a